Good evening. My name is Alexis Folgueras, the RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Our October meeting is always quite special because we take time at the beginning of the meeting to honor our veterans who have served. So I would like to introduce and ask those who are present to come down to the front, where they will lead us in a pledge, but not before I tell you a little bit about who they are. So Skip Ock from District 10, District 11, I'm sorry, Skip, if you want to come over. Kip Bergweger from District 8 is coming down. Jan Niffen of District 11 is not here this evening. Tom West from District 11. James Waters, District 12. And Daniel Izzo, who's not here, he's from District 6. So gentlemen, when you get all down here, we're going to have you lead us in the pledge. Okay, you want to lead us in the pledge and then I'm going to tell folks about who you are.
Are we starting? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Now stand there, gentlemen, in a nice line. Dan's going to take a picture, but before we get to that, I'm going to embarrass you a little bit. Okay, so Skip Ock is a US Army Vietnam veteran, serving from 1968 to 1971. He served as part of Team 88, the Mekong Delta region, and was awarded the Bronze Star. Next to him is Kip, yep. Next to him is Kip Bergweger, District 8, US Army, Vietnam veteran, served from 1964 to 1966. He was involved with military intelligence and received the Bronze Star for meritorious service. Yay, Kip. Then we have James Waters, US Navy Lieutenant Commander, US Navy SEALs. Served from 2006 to 2018, served in combat in Afghanistan, awarded the Bronze Star and Joint Services Commendation Medal with Valor. Then we have Tom West, US Army First Lieutenant, Army Infantry Officer from 1964 to 1966, stationed at the Pentagon in the Office of the Secretary of Defense. Jan Niffen could not be here this evening. So he was a US Air Force captain, Vietnam veteran, served from 1970 to 1976, also actively served in the Yom Kippur War in 1973. And Daniel Izzo, who's a member of District 6, also not with us this evening. US Army Captain, served in the Army from 1998, 2010, a Black Hawk helicopter pilot. He's a veteran of both the Iraq and the Afghanistan wars, and he was awarded the Bronze Star for meritorious service. And, yep. And finally, I would like to make sure we recognize Bob McKnight, who we lost six months ago, and who is someone that I know many of us still miss greatly, especially me, because I adored Bob. And what Bob would have me read year after year was something very modest, and it would always be, "Bob McKnight, US Army Staff Sergeant, Vietnam Veteran, served from 1967 to 1970." But he would invariably leave out that he was awarded two Purple Hearts, five Bronze Stars, a Silver Star, three Air Medals, two Army Commendations, and one National Defense Medal. So Bob McKnight, I look forward to you haunting me from the great beyond for sharing those details. And I would like to thank you all for your service. Did you get your picture taken? Did Dan take the picture? I would like a nice picture, good lighting. I'm very picky about my pictures. Great, all right. And we're going to see if we can get that published in the First Selectman's little blog thing that he does on Friday, okay? All right, we have another announcement with this Matt Duchamp, who's the chairman of our Hamel Rink Task Force, and I invite him to give his announcement or an update. He'll be giving us an update on the task force.
Good evening. I'd like to thank, first of all, the moderator for granting my request to provide you with an update on the work of the Hamel Rink Task Force. My name is Matt Duchamp, and I'm a current member of the BET and chairman of the Hamel Rink Task Force. I would like to take this opportunity to first publicly thank the task force members for their hard work and dedication to this project. We have met on a weekly basis for the past seven months, and we have maintained full participation, a testament to their volunteerism. There are nine members representing important Greenwich constituencies. Cap Ashworth is the vice chair, the RTM. Steph Cowie, Secretary, ADA Advisory and Advocacy Committee. Dan Izzo, RTM. Megan Cutler, the Byram Neighborhood Association. Javier Alman, Energy Management Advisory Committee. Michael Armstrong, the Veterans Association. And Ed Fuss and Christina Schwefel, who are First Selectman appointees. I'd like to also thank the town administrators. They have been steadfast supporters of our work, attending all of our meetings held after hours to accommodate public participation. Kate Bush, the town administrator. Luigi Romano, Department of Public Works Buildings, Construction and Maintenance. Joe Cicliano, Parks and Recreation. And Peter Lowe, Planning and Zoning. The Hamel Rink Task Force has made substantial progress in its mission to independently evaluate and recommend a site for a new municipal ice rink in Greenwich. The task force work has been driven by rigorous site evaluation, extensive community and stakeholder engagement, and detailed facility discussions per our charge. In the months of May and June, we met with RTM committee chairs, Finance, Budget Overview, Public Works, Legislative and Rules, who emphasized the need for transparency, clear cost estimations, and increased public input compared to the previous committee's process. We held two valuable public hearings on June 4th and October 8th, which reinforced key community themes. The importance of maintaining ice time, the desire for two ice sheets if possible, and the necessity of transparency and community involvement. Approved and published, we revised the rink evaluation matrix and project plan in those months. We began an in-depth review of sites already on the rink evaluation metrics, as well as several new public suggestions, and established a process for their initial review. The task force has systematically evaluated a long list of potential sites, approximately 30 in total, leading to the elimination of numerous non-viable locations and a focus on a short list of finalists. In the months of July and August, sites were eliminated due to wetlands, open space, and shape constraints. Those parcels included the North Street School and Indian Field Road. Sites eliminated due to drainage, green space concerns, and/or conflicts with the POCD, or Cohen Eastern Greenwich Civic Center, Havermeier Field, Baldwin Park, and Cristiano Park. Holly Hill was also determined to be not viable due to lack of suitable space and residential proximity, among other factors. There remains three sites and four configurations. Site one, Merlot Park. Two configurations, the flip option and a build-in place. Site two, Island Beach Parking Lot. Site three, Horse Neck Parking Lot. For these locations, we deepened our review of the challenges, the opportunities, building height allowances, physical site attributes, and we utilized town parking data for context. We are currently awaiting for the results of a Phase 1 environmental impact study and importantly, a professional cost estimate for these locations, which will include cost estimates for possible new features and a temporary ice rink if necessary. The Hamel Rink Task Force also advanced discussions on the facility itself, focusing on features and sustainability. Discussions focused on optimizing sightings and the number of locker rooms, restroom requirements, professional shop and concession stand integration, and the facility building square footage acknowledging the need to adapt design features based on the final site. The task force also toured the new Wings Arena in Stanford for operational and design insights, as well as utilization and capacity. Sustainability. The task force is committed to an energy-efficient facility with an EMAC representative providing insights on potential for geothermal and solar power at the various sites, all with an eye towards reducing potential operating costs. The Hamel Rink Task Force is working to finalize site selection recommendations and reviewing all previously considered sites of all town-owned parcels to ensure every possible site has been reviewed twice before making our final recommendation. We will hold a vote and present one or two final sites to the First Selectman's office. The task force is prepared to finalize its comprehensive assessment and proceed with the recommendation and a final report that reflects both rigorous evaluation and extensive community input. All of our work and supporting documents are available on the town website under the Hamel Rink Task Force, and include the project plan, the rink evaluation matrix, bi-monthly reports, meeting agendas and minutes, and a public feedback form. I encourage members of this body and any concerned residents to review the website for information on the project and to submit your feedback. Thank you for your time.
I would like to thank Mr. Duchamp for all of his hard work in putting that committee together and keeping it running over many months and for their diligent work, very thoughtful and diligent and thorough work. Weekly, I get email updates from them weekly, and it's really remarkable that they've been able to filter through so much information and keep everyone up to date. So I thank you for all of your hard work on that, as well as your committee. We have one final announcement, which is from Harry Fisher, who I believe is online, Craig. And I believe he is here to give you all an update on the capital planning plan, maybe the Capital Planning Planning Committee Plan. Mr. Fisher, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not there in person, but I was attending the Nathaniel Withersall Board Meeting online and went a little later than I expected. I just want to point out or really discuss with everybody that in regard to the capital planning process, there was a group that met, I think, three or four times that included myself, the town administrator, the First Selectman, members of the Finance Department staff, and the chairs of the Finance and Budget Overview Committees. And we all jointly provided advice to the town administrator and the First Selectman about the capital planning process, what we thought could be improved upon, what we thought were the deficiencies. We really left it up to the First Selectman and the town administrator to take the advice. My understanding is that we'll have a five-year look forward on the capital planning process instead of a 15-year. The 15-year was really a too-long a process. And interestingly, when I was on the TNW Board Meeting, they were talking about their strategic plan is going to be more of a three-year plan. I think we're finding that these long look-forwards are not productive. So I think you'll see some good results as we go through the budget season that really ramps up in January, but the town departments and the First Selectmen are going to be working hard. I know that the Board of Ed is already working hard on its capital plan, and I've seen some preliminary numbers there. And, you know, the other thing is I announced at the debate, the BET debate, that I'm going to hold a public hearing to solicit more input from the public on the capital projects. I've reserved the town hall meeting room for Thursday, the 13th of November, and I'm in discussions with the First Selectman about joining that and having a joint public hearing to get input from the public. So that's really what I wanted to impart to everybody. I welcome people to contact me at any time with input and look forward to working with the RTM going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that is our last announcement for the evening. So, as all members have received a copy of the minutes from the September meeting, the reading of those minutes shall be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to the minutes from the September meeting? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes from the September meeting stand adopted upon unanimous consent. That brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. And I notify the membership, I need my trusty little sticky note here, that I would recommend the following organization of the call. Consent items 2, 3, 5, 8, 9, 11, and 12, combined for the purpose of postponing to December 2025 meeting, items 1, 4, 6, 7, and 10, leaving two items, items 13 and 14, to take up separately. So pursuant to our rules, I will designate items 2, 3, 5, 8, 9, 11, and 12 to our consent calendar, and if they remain on the consent calendar, all you will hear is what I am about to say. So item two is the nomination of Wayne Sullivan to be a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring October 31st, 2029. Item three is the appointment of James Evester to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring October 31st, 2029. Item five is the nomination of Kenneth Greenberg to be a regular member of the Board of Ethics for a term expiring June 30th, 2028. Item eight is the appointment of Mary Jenkins to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring October 31st, 2028. Item nine is the appointment of Peter Finkbiner to be a regular member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring December 30th, 2029. Item 11 is an appropriation of $15,000 to be added to the following account, A207-52340. That is for the trailer for the Coast Guard Firehouse for mold remediation. And item 13 is an appropriation of $60,000 to... What? Oh, sorry, 12. Wouldn't it be nice to get 13 on that? Sorry. That would make our meeting so much shorter, and I can go home and watch a Dodgers game, but I don't think that's going to happen. So item 12 is the sum of $60,000 to be appropriated to Z206 Capital Non-Recurring Fund for the Staff Response Vehicle Replacement. Does anyone object to those items on the consent calendar? Craig, could you please prepare the consent calendar vote? Okay, so if you are in favor of those consent calendar items, 2, 3, 5, 8, 9, 11, and 12, you vote yes. If you are opposed to them, you would vote no. You'll have one minute on the clock, and I think we have some spooky music for you in honor of Halloween, but who knows? Okay. All right, let's see. Craig, are you going to reboot it or something? All right, we're going to reboot it. And then maybe it'll work better the second time. We cannot move on, Mr. Dedakis, because it's a recorded vote. Well, it doesn't do us any good to move on because the next one is also going to be a recorded vote. Well, let's just see where it is. We can all just give it another minute, and then we'll, if not, we'll go on to getting the motions to postpone.
Hold. Hold.
I feel like we're not so sure as a name.
Everyone online. Yes, we think. Well, I could have died.
All right, I think we've resurrected it, but let's just see. Craig, you want to... Let's see if he can cast it on the screen and let's see what happens. Okay. Why don't you try using your clickers and seeing if... Okay. So we'll leave it open for a minute or so to make sure everybody... Has Sil voted? I don't see his thing. His isn't voted, but he's right there. Is he voting? Ask Sil. Sil, did he vote? Because it's not coming up. You're like, I can't tell. It doesn't... huh? You voted? Look up there, Sil. It doesn't look like, or over there, it doesn't... Oh, okay, good, okay. Has everyone voted that wants to vote? I know it's only the consent calendar, but I just want to make sure that you voted. If you... Steel, correct. Steel does not look like she's voted. She has to, I'm being told that for those online, you just have to refresh, and perhaps that will allow you to vote, so... Kathy Steele. She's not coming up as having voted. Debbie Applebaum? Okay, so did you refresh it? Okay, so why don't you come up to the front? And then you can cast a paper ballot or however they want to do it with you. Okay, so we're just going to wait a minute to see what...
Now we're recording.
Do you get it to work? Okay, okay. Okay. So... Craig? West is in. Tom West is in, yep. So switch, tell them to switch it. Okay, so I noticed that Kathy Steele is still not in, but perhaps Ms. Baye, if you tell her to hit refresh? And it... And then, so what I'm told is if you hit abstain or something other than your vote, and then go back to it, it will record the new vote. Okay? Has everyone voted that wants to vote now? I appreciate your patience, but has everyone voted who wants to vote? Okay, Kathy Steele is in. Okay, I'm going to close the vote. So I have the vote on the consent calendar. So I have the vote on the consent calendar, and again, I appreciate your patience, but it was 178 in favor, zero abstaining, I'm sorry, zero noes and zero abstaining. Craig, can you please? Show the vote? Okay, there you go. All right, so that now brings us to our combined calendar. Those are 1, 4, 7, and 10 for the purpose of postponing to December 2025. In order to combine items, we need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine for voting purposes? 1, 4, 6, 7, and 10. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable and does require a two-thirds to pass. We will try this by unanimous consent, but if anyone objects, we will take a record vote. Is there anyone who objects to suspending the rules to combine for voting purposes? Items 1, 4, 6, 7, and 10. Hearing no objection, the motion to suspend the rules and combine for voting purposes, those items, has been adopted upon unanimous consent. So we will take up the first item on the combined calendar, which I believe is Richard Kaplan. Mr. Lee, are you making that motion to postpone? Frederick Lee, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Resolved that the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Nataniel Witherall for a term expiring June 30, 2028, Richard Kaplan.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Lee, would you like to offer your motion?
Yes, the Appointments Committee unanimously consented to postpone until this. The, the Appointments Committee unanimously voted to postpone until December.
Okay. Anyone, I don't think the Health and Human Services Committee is objecting to that, correct? Okay. Actually, you met with him, I think, a while ago. Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to our.
Right, the Appointments Committee was not able to meet with Richard Kaplan as he was unavailable.
Okay. Yes. But I, okay. Our next item is item number four, Mr. Bocino. Who is, I think Parks and Rec is offering that because Appointments did meet with them. Yeah, him.
Mr. Bocino is unable to attend Tuesday, last Tuesday's meeting.
We need, I'm sorry, we need the resolution, Ms. Leballo, first. Apologies.
Be it resolved that the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Park and Recreation, R6, for a term expiring June 30, 2028, Michael Bocino.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded. It is now before us. Now, Ms. Leballo, you can.
Park and Recreation voted to postpone the appointment of Mike Bocino as he was unable to attend Tuesday evening's meeting.
Okay. Appointments, you're okay with that? Okay. That brings us to item six, Brad Markowitz. Who's making that motion? Mr. Lee again.
Right, item six, resolved, resolved that the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Board of Nataniel Witherall for a term expiring June 30, 2028, Brad Markowitz.
Okay. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Lee?
The Appointments Committee was unable to meet with Brad Markowitz as he was traveling and is now, he was unanimously voted to postpone until December.
Okay. You want to read in item number seven, which I believe is our next one, Nicholas McCreary?
Yes. Item seven, resolved that the following name person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, R2, for a term expiring October 31, 2028, Nicholas McCreary.
Okay, will a member please move the adoption? The resolution has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Lee?
Yes, Nicholas McCreary was unable to attend the Appointments Committee and his vote was unanimously postponed until December.
Okay, and then I think our last postponement is item number 10, John Stancumis, and either, I think Land Use is the one that's postponing that, correct? It's definitely not Appointments because they nominate, so it's either, do we have someone from Land Use? Mr. Quigley. Dan Quigley, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Resolved the following name person nominated by the RTM Appointments Committee be appointed as a regular member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring December 30th, 2029, John J. Stancumis. He could not be at the meeting, so we do.
Okay, you got to let me take it first from you.
I will gladly do that.
I see, okay. Well, you're taking Mr. Rubin's job. Will you please move in second? All right, there we go. May we have the reports from the committees? That's your cue.
Yes, thank you, madam.
All right.
He was not able to make the meeting and we did vote to postpone.
Okay. No objection, I'm guessing from Public Works at all. Okay, so is there any objection to postponing items 1, 4, 6, 7, and 10 to our December 2025 meeting? Okay, we can do this by unanimous consent. If anyone objects, we will take a record vote. Any objection to those items going on and being postponed till December 2025? Okay, hearing none and absent objection, those items stand adopted to be postponed to December upon unanimous consent. Okay, now, that brings us to item 13, which is the first of our two separate items. And item 13 is a second read of the item we took up in September, which is Substitute Resolution to amend the dog ordinance. So if we can have the reports from the committees that considered this item, you can come right up to the front and, and begin there. So either Health and Human Services, Legislative and Rules, Parks and Recreation, I think those are the three committees.
I guess I'm first. Good evening, everybody. So we had Joe Siciliano, Director of Parks and Recreation, Beth Evans, Director of Environmental Affairs, and Nancy Chapin, Member of the Board of Parks and Recreation, present this item to our committee. We did spend a lot of time on it in September, so I'll just hit the highlights here. Beth Evans shared that she consulted with multiple stakeholders, including the Audubon Residence Park Staff, the Conservation Commission, Environmental Affairs Group, and that everyone recommended maintaining the current December 1 start date. There was a concern that any earlier opening could negatively affect wildlife and park use balance. The delicate park use balance was the theme of our meeting. Nancy Chapin noted that this proposal has come before the committee multiple times, as we know, but this was new information for us, that the December 1 start date was not arbitrary. It was originally selected specifically to avoid the high Thanksgiving traffic. She talked about enforcement remaining to be a key issue and the public health concerns due to bacteria and dog waste. We covered all that in September, and expressed appreciation for Parks and Rec staff, but emphasized that a few bad apples caused the problems. And she also urged that we respect the expert recommendations from the commissions and our town staff to focus on the park protection. Justice Liano reported that there were 31 dog bites last year, and that's not at the point. I think that was townwide, but still. And explained that the current December-April season was established in the 70s to avoid overlap with boating and holiday traffic and all the things that are going on. You know, very diverse park users, walkers, boaters, windsurfing, you know, everything that's happening there. And that the staff and the Parks and Recreation Board opposed changing the date and similar proposals that failed twice before. Our committee had a number of questions for this group, asked about different enforcement models referencing Stanford's Dog Warden issuing tickets at Myanis Park. Joe responded that the Greenwich Animal Control only has three officers to cover 60 miles of territory, and that's insufficient for full enforcement at the beach. That would be a full-time job to chase dog owners at the point. Additional questions were about alternative ideas, meaning could we limit hours such as 6:00 to 10:00 a.m. for dogs? And Joe noted that enforcement would be difficult. Park employees cannot issue summonses, only revoke passes, and only during the hours that they're, you know, staffing there. And even if police issued tickets, the revenues go to the state, not the town, of actually removing the financial incentive, but I've actually learned that a portion does go to the town, but still a portion goes to the state. And another member mentioned that the police chief has noted recently that they're understaffed and the priority is likely not to be dog chasers at the beach if they were able to get more, more staff. Joe mentioned that Greenwich Point encompasses 140 acres of diverse wildlife. Comparisons made to other towns, Norwalk bans dogs on beaches year-round. Westport experiences crowding with their dogs, and Fairfield even allows horses on the beaches. And the Greenwich has 2,000 acres of parkland. That's not including school grounds, which, by the way, you're not supposed to put a dog on. But people do anyway, so there's lots of other places for dogs. And commercial dog walkers are frequent park users as well, so that's another enforcement issue, challenge. At our September HHS meeting, we did vote on a motion to extend the dog season to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and that vote passed 10-1-0. I mentioned that at the last September meeting. But our conversation, there wasn't an appetite for that at our October meeting. So our vote for keeping it the December 1, well, actually, the way the amendment is written, our vote for changing it to November 15 start date failed 0-10-1. One abstained noting that this item revealed multiple unresolved issues requiring further review. So Health and Human Services does not feel that the motion to extend it to anything other than what it is now, December 1, is, is what we should be doing.
The appropriate time at the end of the committee reports, I'll ask you to give the amendment that you offered in September again, so we can take that up. Okay. Catherine Leballo, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening, Madam Moderator, members of the RTM. Your Park and Rec Board took up item 13 on Tuesday evening. First, we want to thank the number of departments and individuals that spent a lot of time taking this with a real serious recognition of the standing regulation, which has been a longstanding regulation, I believe going back to, I want to say, the 19, the mid-1970s. That was remarked upon during the meeting. And that the, the departments in our meeting in the prior month, Park and Recreation revised the resolution to keep it within, to, to keep it within order so that it could continue on to this month's call. This month, Park and Rec took up what would be more the merits of the case. Your Park and Rec Committee is very familiar, of course, with Greenwich Point, but also the many diverse parks across, across our town. Thanksgiving and the two-week extension was seen from kind of both sides of the coin. One, with Thanksgiving being a time when many students come home and visitors and that certain pets and members are part of the family, so they would want to be able to include them on their walks. But on the other side of that, of course, a time when there is a high volume or there could be a spike because, of course, people are home and they're still trying to get out and get in a little bit of that weather. It was noted also about the number of dog bite incidents, but that those incidents were not directly tied specifically to any one park or, or parks even in general, that that was spread, you know, across the town. The, ultimately, your Park and Recreation Board voted 4, 7, 1 to not recommend that this, this change to the ordinance move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Bergweger, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the RTM and guests. Legislative Rules Committee met last Monday night to take up item 13. All of the districts were present. We also had Joseph Siciliano, Director of Parks and Recreation, Tracy Friedman and Nancy Chapin, who are members of the Board of Parks and Recreation, Karen Fasuliotis, who is on BET Law Committee, and Amina Ahmad, who is the Assistant Town Attorney. The proponent of this matter was unable to attend the meeting, so we went directly to guests who were associated with the Department of Recreations. And Mr. Siciliano reported that after the first read, the Board of Parks and Recreation approved a resolution with a vote of 7 to 1 in opposition to the proposed exchange of the dates. Also, this, that day, it was October 20, at about noon, we got a resolution adopted by the Conservation Commission, also opposing the, the whole proposal. Then Ms. Chapin and Ms. Friedman noted that the issue had come before the board on two previous occasions, in 2015 and 2021. Both times it was voted down. And the, this time around, the proposal had not been vetted with, by being presented to other agencies who were involved with the parks, such as the Shellfish Commission, the Police Department, the Department of Health, and in this moment, the Conservation Commission. And back as mentioned earlier, in 1970s, the date that December was selected. The, let's see. Mrs. Siciliano noted that Parks and Recreation, they are the stewards of Greenwich Point, and increased crowds were burdensome to the habitat and the town. For example, in the past six days of good October weather, 9,000 people had been admitted to Greenwich Point. He stressed the need for balance and noted that four or five other department heads had expressed lack of support. Ms. Fasuliotis provided statistics from the Shellfish Commission that argued against an extension due to the potential for degradation of the ecosystem. One of our delegates asked whether it might be possible to come up with a compromise that allowed dogs on certain days but not on others. Mr. Siciliano said it would be too hard to manage. He noted that historically, upwards of 90% of the turnaways at Greenwich Point in November were because the visitors had dogs with them. And some of our, members of our committee commented on the bad experiences they had because it is not unusual for dog walkers to not have their dogs on leash. And some people had been jumped, some people had been chased, some people had been bitten. And it was a difficult, it was not easy to enforce the leash requirement because there are only three officers involved in dog patrol for the entire town. Our vote on legal order was 10-0-2. The vote on the merits was 2 in favor, 9 in opposed, 1 abstaining. Those voted in favor felt that an additional two weeks extension seemed reasonable. The delegate, one of our delegates who had voted with the majority wanted it noted that she believed that there were longstanding issues that residents raised with the town repeatedly, like this item, and that we should therefore make a greater effort to identify compromise solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Waters, did BOC take this up as well? Okay, James Waters, Chair of our BOC Committee.
Good evening. I'll keep this quick because BOC discussed this item at length, but then decided not to vote. I'll explain why. I'll explain why. We heard from the proponent of the item, Ms. Violet Webby, as well as Parks and Rec Director Joe Siciliano, who did express the view of the Board of Parks and Rec that didn't support any extension of the current dog season. BOC members felt that the budget impact was immaterial, whether the ordinance be changed to the day before Thanksgiving or mid-November, which are the two dates discussed in our meeting. Our members did express concerns with the current lack of enforcement of existing leash laws and dog licensing requirements, which were cited as problematic elements of the existing dog season and would likely require additional resources to address. But based on a limited view of what's being proposed here, a simple extension of the dog season without any corresponding move to improve enforcement, BOC decided not to vote on the item, given the negligible budgetary impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have a couple people that have signed up. Kathleen McMahon. I don't know if she's here or online. Is there Kathleen McMahon online, Craig? Ms. McMahon, if you're online, can you raise your hand? No? All right, well, we can come back to her if you find her. Okay? No, Kathleen McMahon. All right. If she literally pops up with her hand, we'll come back to her. Tracy Friedman? To be followed by Nancy Chapin. This is the motion to amend. Yes. Yes, that's what you signed up for.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, fellow RTM members. My name is Tracy Friedman, and I serve on both the RTM Parks and Recreation Committee and the Board of Parks and Recreation. So I've been following this item closely. I hope you will join me in voting against this motion to amend. While it may sound like a small change just five days earlier, it would include the Thanksgiving weekend, a particularly challenging and high-volume time to introduce dogs at Greenwich Point. As you've heard tonight, the December 1 date was not arbitrary. It was established in the 1970s and based on town staff experience, public input, and research, identifying a time when the beach naturally quiets down after Thanksgiving. That date was set within a broader beach calendar designed to balance the needs of all users: boating, biking, shellfishing, kite flying, and other seasonal activities, all of which depend on clearly defined schedules. The Board of Parks and Recreation, along with our other boards, commissions, and town departments, the groups with the expertise, management, and enforcement responsibilities, have all recommended keeping the current date. And while the RTM has the authority to change ordinances, doing so without their involvement and input does not feel like prudent or collaborative governing. As a town, we already struggle to enforce our existing leash law. So it's difficult to justify extending the season when we can't effectively enforce the one we have. If there's a path forward, it should come through a broader discussion, one that includes our boards, commissions, town departments, and residents, to explore what makes sense for everyone. I love dogs, too, and I understand how much people enjoy bringing them to the beach. But the December 1 date reflects balance, fairness, and careful planning. And I urge you to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, Nancy Chapin to be followed by Sue Baker.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, RTM members and guests. This will be quick, but there are some repeats, and I apologize for that. My name is Nancy Chapin. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm a former member of this body and the Conservation Commission, and I currently serve on the Board of Parks and Recreation. Thank you, Tracy, for succinctly stating so many of the facts. I stand simply to support for keeping the December 1 start date and to oppose the amendment to move it to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It's not a big change, but it's a great deal of research and thought went into this date to align with the broader seasonal schedule that keeps Greenwich Point balanced for all users. You've heard all the many users that use the point. The expert boards and commissions that you, as RTM members, appoint along with the town departments responsible for management and enforcement have all recommended against changing the date. That collective expertise deserves consideration and respect. I'm a dog lover. I'm a former dog owner and a strong supporter, as many of you know, of our town parks. I love seeing residents out enjoying our parks with the dogs, especially those who abide by our code, which our moderator does, I might note. But please remember, we have four months for the dogs at Greenwich Point, but we also have 365 days to enjoy over 2,000 acres in our town parks. Finally, I do think a balanced, diverse park use warrants further discussion. But for now, let's keep December 1. Strikes the right balance, and I urge you to vote no against this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, and our final speaker, unless Ms. McMahon presents herself as Sue Baker on this item.
Thank you. Thank you. The Conservation Commission, the Shellfish Commission, Liaison to Parks and Rec, and the Harbor Management Commission. This is not our first go-around with this. Our concern is water quality. And as you know, the shellfish beds are open for recreational shellfishing. And the concerns of contamination from fecal matter by dogs being in the beds are a concern for us as the Shellfish Commission. As for Conservation Commission, our concerns are disrupting wildlife, some of which are migratory at that time of year and some of which are continuing to breed throughout that time of year. So the presence of dogs, especially because keeping them on leash does not seem to be an enforceable condition, is of great concern. Also, in terms of shellfishing, we have been very lucky in our town to keep our shellfish beds open. The concern is that there can be disease caused by fecal matter. It's Enterococcus, a bacteria that is an all-fecal matter of mammals as well as other organisms. Shellfish, and by that I mean clams, oysters, bivalves, univalves, not lobsters, not crabs. Shellfish cycle water throughout their bodies continuously. And so they would take in, without discrimination, any bacteria that's in the water. And Enterococcus is a disease-causing bacteria. We are starting our opening of our beds, our shellfish beds, in the late fall because that's when the boats are out of the water. There are no more open heads. There is no more swimming, less swimming. And the waters can be tested and declared to be clean. In the summer, our town Department of Health, Health Department, tests the waters to see if one is clean enough for swimming. In the winter, we rely on the labs of NOAA in Milford and the University of Connecticut in Milford. And so we continuously take samples of the water from 35 different sites in Long Island Sound and along the shore to those labs so that we know that the water is clean enough for you to harvest and to eat the shellfish. There is also serious commercial shellfishing on all the beds in Greenwich that rely on those same readings that we get in our town. So for that reason, it would be really detrimental to everybody's health if there were allowed to be dogs, and I know you can't keep them on leash, running throughout the shallow waters and the beds of the town of Greenwich beds that are managed by the Shellfish Commission. Some of the beds are commercial and some are privately owned, but we sample all of them. So for that reason, the Shellfish Commission and the Conservation Commission are against allowing dogs on the beach any earlier than the given December 1 date. Thank you.
Ms. Solar, I apologize. Did you want to offer any comments on behalf of the HHS motion? Or are you good? Okay.
Although the motion was made in September, we have since, I asked the committee if there was an appetite for this, and there wasn't after listening to all the experts in town. So the HHS committee no longer supports that motion for the Wednesday before Thanksgiving.
Thank you. So I think that concludes the speaker list for the Health and Human Services motion to amend Item 13, to bring it forward to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And I just want to remind folks, that motion was originally offered by the committee in September. But because this is our second read, we are actually disposing of it now. Okay. Craig, can you please prepare the vote? And what will happen is, depending on the outcome of this vote, then we would take a vote on Item 13 as it appears on the call. Okay. So this is the Health and Human Services motion to allow animals on beaches the Wednesday before Thanksgiving through March 31st. And we're limited by the number of characters that you can have in our little heading up there. So I believe, in theory, this is an amendment to Section 7-44. That's not there. If you are in favor of that Health and Human Services motion, you would vote yes. If you are opposed, you would vote no. Craig, can you start the clock there? Thank you. Let's see if it goes back. We're actually wondering, how many people are using the app on their phone here? Yeah, we're wondering if it's too many people using the app with the Wi-Fi. Like if it's, if it's... Like there's a new phone app, right? And we're drawing off of the Wi-Fi. So we're trying to figure that out. As opposed to when you use that clicker, which is the closed system. Steph? I can't hear you. Yeah, I mean, you can get a clicker, I think, because the, the... Are we having... The clicker's not working either, they're saying. Yeah. Well... No, Craig's working on it. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Can I mention this hat?
Okay, I don't know if anyone has noticed this hat sitting up here. It is from a past meeting of the RTM. So if anybody recognizes it or whose head it might have been on, please take it to them. Thank you. Okay. So for people at home, I think we've got it going. Craig's gonna put that on. If you're at home, just refresh. If you're here, sometimes you can refresh or change your vote and then go back to your original vote. We'll leave it open for a few more minutes to make sure everybody who wants to cast a vote can cast their vote. Okay? Can everybody check to make sure? Mr. Broadhurst, I see you here, but I don't see you up there. It should be working, but there you go. So can everyone just make sure that you've voted if you would like to vote? Are you all good? Okay, we have about 167 voting. Okay? Okay. So I'm gonna just give it another few seconds, and then anyone who wants to vote can... Greg Zorthian, where's he? He's over here. All right, why don't you come up? Did you hit refresh? Are you on your phone?
Yeah.
Have I ever shared with you how much I love technology? Like, my suite at Silver Hill can't be ready fast enough. So Mr. Zorthian, you want to come up and see if... Have to refresh it. You just have to refresh it. Are we good? Is anyone else... Am I missing anybody? You're all good? Can I close the vote? Yeah. All right. Craig, can you please close the vote? Okay. Okay, the vote on the Health and Human Services motion to amend to the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, those in favor, 41; opposed, 135; abstaining, 1. That motion has failed. Craig, can you please show the vote? Craig, can you please show the vote? Okay, we'll leave that up for a second. That now brings us to the debate on item 13 as it appears on the call. And again, we have a few speakers signed up, so I'll just go through them. Is Violet Webby here? Okay, Ms. Webby, come on down.
Hi, everybody. I'm gonna keep this short, so Ms. Holgers can watch the Dodgers game. But I want to thank you all for your time. And given the support of the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I don't believe there's anything I can add to counter the arguments brought up this evening. And I want to thank you all for your time once again.
So, Ms. Webby, I would like to, I don't know, well, I can kind of guess where this vote is gonna go, but I would like to thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's remarkable that a young woman who's in a civics class or at the high school has even thought to bring this forward and put a lot of work into it. You should be aware that this is the farthest this item has ever gotten. It usually dies at the Parks and Recreation Board Committee meetings, which had died on the vine twice there. So the fact that you even got it to the floor is an achievement in itself, and I think you should feel proud in that. And we'll see where it goes, but hopefully you and Finchley, your dog, will have many days of good beach weather from December through what appears to be March 31st. But Joe Sisliano, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator and the RTM members. I also applaud Violet for bringing this forward, even though we spent numerous hours on this topic, more than I've spent on my budget in the last five hours, talking to RTM members in the last five years about the Parks and Recreation budget, but here we are today. You heard some previous speakers talk about creating the balance, and I think that's the job of the professional staff and the boards that you put members on, like the Board of Parks and Recreation, Board of Health, Conservation, Shellfish, all these folks that volunteer with specialties and backgrounds and professional certifications to advise the town on topics like this. So just to kind of recap, and I won't beat a dead horse here, there's been at least four department heads that have come out against this. There's three boards or commissions, Parks and Recreation, Shellfish, Conservation, that have voted against it, and three of your own standing committees that have voted it down. So I think the advice is here. I think people should yield to that. And we, as Parks and Recreation, take this seriously in the sense that we are charged with creating a balance of the use of the facility. Currently, dogs are allowed at Greenwich Point for four months. We manage other activities that happen at Greenwich Point, such as shellfishing, kite surfing, traffic-free Sundays, and they're put in different sections, times of the year for a reason, because we understand the flow of how the facility operates. This is not only for Greenwich Point, but this would also affect Barn Park and the users of Barn Park. So I don't, I don't take, you know, I don't want to disregard that. It just seems like the focus is at Greenwich Point, but this will also affect the Barn Beach and Barn Park. So with that said, you know, we think that, we put it, it's in the right place, the four months, December 1st to March 31st. And just look around at some of the daily, go to the park, go to any park, go to any school ground, there are dogs 365 days of the year, running throughout the town's properties. And there are just really no bad dogs. There are just some bad dog owners that are owned by the leash law. So let's not penalize everyone, but the recommendation here is not to change the current dates that we have that are part of the, that are part of the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think it's part of the charter, though. I believe it's our code of ordinances. I doubt our constitution contemplated dogs at the beach, but, okay. All right. We have Kathleen McMahon, is she here, or she's still not here? Okay. Then we have Mary Flynn. Is Mary Flynn online?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening. My name is Mary Flynn. I'm from D-12. I wanted to ask you to join me in voting no to the dog ordinance, allowing dogs at Todd's Point on Thanksgiving. But first, I wanted to commend Ms. Webby for bringing something, a Greenwich High School student, for bringing something in front of this body that she truly believes in. And I hope that both you and other young people continue to get involved. However, now it's left to us to decide, and from all the other things that have been pointed out, I think it's going in one direction. I love dogs. I'm allergic to dogs. If I can't resist it and pet one, I have to go wash my hands, otherwise they'll swell up. When my daughter was young, she too was quite allergic, and a friendly dog licked her face, it rashed up and more. There's many of us that are allergic, as well as some who are afraid. One of my D-12 colleagues shared a story of him bringing two guests to show them the beauty of Todd's Point. They were unfamiliar with the beach. They were late teens, early twenties. It was a beautiful December day. It was low tide, and suddenly two giant Dobermans came racing towards them. He said they all turned and ran, and it felt like they were running for their life. So in a perfect world, all the dogs would be on leashes, and they'd be licensed. However, we don't live in a perfect world. It's estimated there are approximately 7,000 dogs in town, and only 3,500 are licensed. Especially on Thanksgiving, everyone should be able to come to Todd's Point, bring small children to the beach without the possibility of being knocked over by exuberant friendly dogs. As another colleague said, "This is a people park, not a dog park." I'm not against having a dog park, but I don't think this is an appropriate space for one. The police commissioner, who I don't know if you're gonna speak, but I've heard you're against it, and I've heard that it would take three full-time police officers to enforce the leash and dog litter laws. So please join me, the police commissioner, the conservation commissioner, Parks and Recreation Department, the Audubon Society, and vote no to help preserve the ecological balance and all citizens' enjoyment of Todd's Point. Please vote no to extending the dog law from December 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Carrie Bridge here? Is she online, Craig? Okay. Liz Eckert?
No.
Okay.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, hi. Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members of the RTM. My name is Liz Eckert. I'm a member of D-4. I'm Vice Chair of the Parks and Recreation Committee. And I too would like to thank Violet for bringing this motion before us. It's really refreshing to see a young person involved in the RTM and interested in our town government. And I rise in support of the motion to extend the dog access season. Greenwich has 3,200 licensed dogs, and they're all part of our community. And I feel our parks should be open to all residents, two- and four-legged alike. There's been concerns raised about the safety at various committee meetings, citing 31 dog bite incidents in Greenwich in the past year. That actual number for 2025 is 23 bites. But most importantly, not one of these bites occurred at Todd's Point or Byron Park. Zero. None. Using townwide numbers in this discussion gives an unintentional, but still misleading impression, since the concern here is specifically about dogs in our town beaches. The modest two-week extension falls over Thanksgiving, a time when families gather, college students return home, and residents enjoy our parks together. Allowing dogs during this short period strengthens family bonds and community connection. This is a small, thoughtful change, one that supports families, fairness, and community spirit. And I urge my colleagues to vote yes to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Sue Baker? Is she still here? Okay. Tracy Friedman? And Nancy Chapin? Okay. So that concludes our speaker list on the general debate for item 13. Craig, I get anxious saying this, but let us prepare the vote and... While we're doing that, the Dodgers are up. They had a big run in the top of the fourth, 3-2. They were down behind. All right. Let's see if we can open this up. Not yet. Now it is. Has everyone voted who wants to vote? Ms. Rosenbaum, are you here? I don't see your, there you go. Okay. Has everyone else voted who wants to vote before I close it? Yes? All right, I'm gonna close the vote. Okay. I have the vote on item 13. Those in favor, 34, opposed, 140, abstaining, 1, that item has failed. But again, Ms. Webby, I would like to thank you for your initiative in this, and... And we're hoping to do a little RTM civics lesson at the high school, and you can be like, one of the champions that we mentioned, because we're hoping that more students will be interested in learning about their government or putting forward motions. So you can be our A-plus example of how that's done. Craig, can you please show the vote? There you go. Okay. That now brings us to our final item of the evening, which is item 14. Mr. Jonathan Budd, our Chief of Human Resources at the Board of Education, will be introducing that.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to read the item for number 14. Resolved that the, excuse me? Sure. Resolved that the representative town meeting of the town of Greenwich hereby rejects the agreement between the Board of Education and the Greenwich Education Association, representing teachers for the period July 1st, 2026 to June 30th, 2029. This is a three-year agreement with our teachers group, which represents approximately 900, our teachers in public schools.
All you need to do is read it.
Right.
To give us the report.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution has been moved in second. It is now before us. May we have the reports from the committees that considered this item, beginning with labor contracts and Josh Brown?
Good evening, Madam Moderator, fellow members and guests. The Labor Contract Committee met on October 14th. We had quite a full house. We had the negotiating team, including Kathleen Stowe and Sophie Kovan. We had Dr. Jones. We had Dr. Jonathan Budd. We had Harry Fisher and Stephen Selbst, who were the BET participants, observers in the negotiation process. We had the Chairs of BOC Education and Finance. Greg couldn't join us, so we had John Merrill, the Vice Chair of Finance. So we had Mr. Waters and Mr. Rubin. And we had the Assistant Town Attorney, Amina Ahmad. We also had the town's Labor Negotiator, Mike Mason, to help us understand this. There were a couple of other members of the BET and GEA present. Dr. Budd shared a couple-of-page handout with some of the key talking points regarding the agreement. It presented some data on the teachers, the breakdown as to the number of teachers in each of the different categories by the degrees that they had and where they are in the steps of interest is 58% of the teachers are at the highest step. They've been here for a good long time and are at the highest step. We also learned that few start in the bachelor's category at the lower steps because they come in with other degrees or they come in with experience. There were three objectives, as was described in that handout and as provided by Dr. Budd. One is to maintain competitive wages. One, the second, is to increase the employee cost share of the medical plan for the employee. And then the third was increasing management rights to deal with consecutive absences. Kathleen Stowe discussed the board's high-level objectives, which I read, and the constraints of the arbitration process. Because this is a final award, and it had not been issued by the lead arbitrator at the time that the committee was meeting, it was kind of a draft that we were discussing. Many of the details of that negotiation remain confidential, and we were told that they could not be shared at our meeting and not with our members. This information that we typically look for includes data on comparables, data on what's happening in the economy, the more specific priorities that the Board of Ed would be going after, but none of that was available. Unfortunately, Greenwich typically goes first, and so it is important to kind of understand what are the priorities and what are the comparables as we look at the contract. There are some questions that we typically look at. Is the contract good for the teachers and is it good for the town? We do look for a balance. Second, what's the process? How did the process go? And thirdly, that's really it, just those two, the process and the agreement itself. So understand that this information that we typically get is given to the RTM committees, and we hadn't gotten it. I did want to comment that the award was published on Thursday. I did send a request for this information, and it was declined, as it was still considered the information of the negotiation was client attorney privilege. Sophie Kovan, also a Board of Ed member and part of the negotiating team, agreed with Dr. Budd's and Ms. Stowe's comments and added that the negotiators really viewed arbitration as very risky, and that she really didn't see the benefit or worth taking the risk of having someone not from Greenwich making decisions about how our... having someone not from Greenwich making decisions about how our contract should be, you know, finalized. There were three elements of the contract that changed. One is the salary GWI, which increased two percent in each of the three years for all of the steps except the top step. The top step increased two-point-eight-seven percent. The second item is the employee cost share. We typically are looking for the employees to increase up to a higher percentage of the overall cost of the medical plans. They increase a half a percent in each of the three years, so they go up to twenty, twenty-one and a half, sorry, twenty, twenty and a half, and twenty-one in the third year. The third item that they had as a priority was the shortening the timeline for consecutive absences. That tends to be a concern. Currently reads seven, and they were able to adjust it down to five. They explained that this was to address poor teacher morale. Historically, again, we get an opportunity as a member of the Labor Contracts Committee and the town's labor negotiator to participate and observe in the negotiation process. We had requested, as Chair of the LCC, for that to occur. Unfortunately, either we didn't get a response or it was, "We'll get back to you." And when they got back to us, they had already started the negotiations, and therefore they can't change the mix of people participating during that process, during that activity. Ultimately, the contract was agreed to and voted on by the Board of Ed, six-zero-zero, at its September meeting. The discussion on the agreement occurred in an executive session, so again, no information as to their debating points and how that proceeded. We had a lot of questions. First is, and I highlight or summarize a few of these, what kind of agreement is this? Who drafted it? And what can the RTM act on? It was prepared and submitted by the parties as requesting an arbitrated award. There was no other information except for the document itself presented. Typically, in an arbitration, there's last best offers from each side, and the arbitrator picks one from here, one from there, whatever they feel is the best answer for our town. As there was no last best offers, they only had the agreement that was jointly agreed to. That was what they reviewed. As to what does it present for the RTM? As an arbitrated award, we have to have two-thirds of the body, not those voting, but the body voting to reject the item. So that's a fairly high bar to achieve, very high bar. We asked specific questions about the GWI. They said they want to be competitive. Well, what does that mean? What are you looking for? No specifics were given. They wanted to have competitive wages. Verbally, in the discussion, they said they were hoping and wanting to keep at the highest in the state. Question, when did the negotiation start? Was the BET involved? And what are other observers? Based on a schedule as published by the state of Connecticut, the commencing of the process was June ninth. Mediation was to start around July twenty-ninth. Arbitration date was set for August twenty-third. All these dates were articulated by state law. It was discussed that they began their discussions on or around the twenty-second and twenty-fourth of July, that there was no meeting with the Finance Board, which is an activity before negotiation starts, they're needing to meet with the board. They did meet with a subset, some of the members. There was questions about the lack of benchmarking data presented. No information, as I described, because it's all attorney-client privilege. Concerned about the errors in the certified cost of contract it had been issued, it had to be sent back, reworked, and then we got a second or third copy. Again, no explanation given. Do want to make sure, just to pause, that we're voting on a contract which is essentially a menu of essentially rates. So if... That's only one part of an equation to come up with a budget. Sorry, a budget includes who are the types of people that we need to do the services that we want to serve. And so it doesn't talk about, "We need X of this or Y of that." It's just, if you want an X, this is what it's going to cost for benefits, for salary, for, you know, their employment. And so I just, there's some confusion as we... Are we talking about a budget? We're not actually talking about a budget. We're talking about a key component to the development of that budget. So I just wanted to highlight that. We had Amina Ahmad, the Assistant Town Attorney, with us because we were questioning exactly the status of the document. Was it an arbitrated award at that time? Again, it was before the award was handed down. Was it considered mediation? There's some gray area, so we are asking her to help us through that discussion. What ultimately happened was they needed to have a phone call between the Board of Ed's attorney and Amina, and she confirmed that this is being handed down as an arbitrated award. So that means we have to have two-thirds if we want to reject it. So confirmed exactly, you know, its status, which was very helpful. The labor contract members expressed frustration and lack of information and also the arbitration process that was utilized to... That effectively prevents the RTM, Greenwich's legislative body, to engage in meaningful discussion on the contract. The Board of Ed was asked to include the town's labor negotiation representative, and that wasn't... That also didn't happen. When we looked at the comparing of the certified cost contract to the last agreement that was done in 2022, on the surface, there was really nothing sticking out. If you look at the year-by-year in the top section, they're tracking around the same. So it wasn't like this was completely wild one way or another. And that was just, I'll say, an acknowledgement within the committee members that really nothing really stuck out. So again, no comparison, nothing to value it. It seemed to track reasonably to the one done in 2022. So a motion was made and seconded to postpone this item indefinitely during the discussion. Members said that there was... It was because of incomplete information provided about it, the concern, an alarm about the loophole, or the timing of it that prevents it or creates this opportunity that blocks the town legislature from really having an engagement and a discussion on what is the largest agreement, largest contract impacting the town. So that was that. Our vote to postpone indefinitely was five-zero-zero. And remember, this is to reject the contract, so this is just to postpone it. By postponing it, the contract will go into force on its own. We're not taking a position one way or another. We're just saying, okay, on you go. We just wanted to also articulate that this is a frustration about the process. Normally, in our reports, we're spending eighty percent on key elements of the contract and the pluses and the minus. Twenty percent maybe on process. On this, it's essentially the flip because of lack of information. We're spending eighty percent trying to understand the process and how it got here and less, far less, on the actual elements of the contract. There are only three things that changed, so it's not a big move, but we wanted to just point that out. And lastly, we wanted to thank that the teachers do a fabulous job day in and day out. So thank you every day for every student, the job that you do. Wanted to make that. So at the appropriate time, I'll make that move to postpone indefinitely.
Okay, thank you very much. James Waters, Chair of Budget Overview Committee.
The Budget Overview Committee also took up this motion to postpone indefinitely, but that motion failed one-eleven-zero with only District Twelve voting yes. We then also considered this item and voted zero-twelve-zero on item fourteen, i.e. to reject. The rejection is listed on the call. I will do my best to avoid repeating some of the good facts that Mr. Brown just went through. We had Dr. Budd, as well as Board of Ed members Kathleen Stowe and Sophie Kovan at our meeting. They highlighted several facts. They did highlight the Board of Ed's six-zero vote, where there were two members absent from that meeting. They highlighted the total cost of the three-year contract at sixteen-point-seven-one percent. Mr. Brown covered the GWI increases. They did highlight the healthcare contribution increases at half a percent a year, getting us up to twenty-one percent in the final year of the contract, as well as the points about teacher absentee addressing management rights regarding teacher absenteeism. The Board of Ed members explained their belief that we wouldn't do as well on these terms if they had proceeded with the arbitration process, and they did specifically highlight to BOC that the agreement is better than that achieved last year in pure towns like New Canaan and Westport. Board of Ed members also, when we asked, they explained that the baseline year for the contract, which is the current fiscal year, the total cost of the GEA contract is approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-four million dollars, and that this is approximately eight million dollars less than anticipated when the RTM considered the 2022 version of the contract, which had then said that this current year would be one-forty-two. This is primarily due to teacher attrition and reductions in staff. And finally, the Board of Ed members said they viewed the increase for the top step as an effort to attract and retain the best teachers in town. We did hear from the superintendent. As some of you know, BOC meetings are often a conflict with Board of Ed meetings, so we were... Took the opportunity to hear from the superintendent as well, who was present, and she did explain the recent and pretty significant improvement in academic performance across the district in every area, including high-need students. Given the discussion in the previous RTM term, at least on BOC, about an alleged decline in academic performance, BOC members were appreciative for the update and the progress being made. We did hear from Mr. Brown and Mr. Leader, who attended and described LCC's consideration of the item and their vote to postpone indefinitely. Mr. Brown already articulated those reasons. BOC then discussed the reasons as to why LCC wasn't privy to further information. I think our members determined that, given the arbitration had already commenced for the contract, state law didn't provide for an early exit to arbitration, even though the terms were negotiated outside of arbitration. We heard from Ms. Ahmad, explain the higher bar for a rejection in this case because it is a stipulated arbitration award, and we discussed that postponing the item indefinitely would have the same effect as approving the contract. And again, just to reiterate at the end, our votes on postpone indefinitely were one-eleven-zero. I was the lone yes vote on postpone indefinitely, and then our vote on the merits, or as listed on the call, was zero-twelve-zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Rubin, Chair of our Education Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, RTM members and guests. On Monday, May twentieth, your Education Committee and the Finance Committee met to discuss item fourteen, the BOE-GEA contract. The invited guests presented the contract details and provided answers to a lengthy Q and A session. The guests included Kathleen Stowe and Sophie Kovan from the BOE, Dr. Jonathan Budd, Chief Human Resources Officer of the GPS, Dr. Tony Jones, Superintendent of GPS, Joshua Brown and Adam Leader from the LCC, Mike O'Mason, the Town Negotiator, and we invited GEA representatives Margaret Jenkins and David Ng Wong to also attend. One of the most difficult things is following some great committee reports. I'm going to try to cherry pick what I have here so that I don't give you too much redundancy, and I apologize if there will be some that were. Basically, the details were covered extensively by those two reports before me, so I'm going to cover more in detail the process, and I think that's the part that we discuss the most at our meetings. The recent GEA Association teacher contract negotiations have raised important concerns about transparency and legislative oversight. Once the process entered arbitration, the RTM lost its ability to meaningfully influence the contract. Even if the RTM rejected the agreement, a second arbitration panel would likely uphold the same terms due to the absence of an evidence record. The arbitration panel was composed of one arbitrator chosen by the Teachers Association, one by the Board of Ed, and a neutral chair. Each side submits a last best offer for every disputed issue, and the panel must choose one side's position in full. However, in this case, both sides settled before any evidence or offers were presented, so the panel only reviewed the joint agreement. This meant there was no public record, no competing proposals, and no opportunity for appeal or meaningful legislative review. Many committee members found this problematic as it bypassed traditional local oversight and limited public review. Notably, no last best offers were submitted, and around forty unresolved negotiation issues were left disclosed... Were never disclosed, further reducing transparency. Compared to prior years, this approach was unprecedented and could set a concerning direction for future negotiations. While the BOE defended the process as fiscally responsible and strategically safer than full arbitration, which could have resulted in higher costs, members of the committees and the LCC criticized the lack of documentation and early coordination. Ultimately, the RTM's only power is to approve the contract or reject it by a two-thirds vote, with rejection unlikely to change the final outcome. The consensus was that although the contract terms were reasonable, the process highlighted a need for better planning, communication, and possible legislative reform to restore meaningful oversight in future contracts. At the conclusion of the joint meeting, the Education Committee met privately to discuss and vote on the contract. The merits of the contract were accepted as fair and reasonable. Most of the discussion focused on the frustration of the members with the process and the reduction of the RTM legislative oversight. Most comments mirrored what had been discussed in this body of this report. We discussed a motion to postpone indefinitely to send the message that although we are unhappy with the process, we are accepting the merits of the contract. We voted on the motion to postpone indefinitely the contract. The motion failed with a vote of three-seven-two. I actually was one of the one yes votes. We then voted on the BOE-GEA contract with a vote of zero-nine-three to not reject the contract. I wanted to also, in conclusion, point out one thing. This is a fair contract, and we discussed it with the GEA representatives, and they were very aware that if this contract passes and the budget and the BET gives a restricted budget going forward, that there will probably be teacher layoffs. And, you know, they acknowledged that, they recognized that that's a fact, and I think everybody here should be aware of that as well. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Merrill, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, guests, colleagues. Everyone stole my thunder. So I will keep it quick. Look, I was filling in for our Chair, Greg Zaranthian, as he was out, and we took up this item. And one process point that I think was outstanding, as we talk about process points that don't work so well, was jointly meeting with the Education Committee because there were different perspectives that were merged together when the Finance Committee met. When we took it up, you had all the guests that you heard from. Helpful Color was shared about the rigid structure and timetable of teacher salary negotiations. The participants involved and not involved in the discussions was noteworthy. Teacher morale was taken up. Teacher headcount expectations and trends, teacher salary trend data in similarly situated towns nearby. There was a document that everyone's seen, the factors and dynamics that come into play when contracts go into arbitration, many of which were described here. It was notable that Margaret Jackson, Representative of GEA, was in attendance but did not offer too many comments, any comments. Following the exploratory meeting, the joint meeting, the Finance Committee also met independently and privately with all districts represented except District Five. We had a fulsome discussion of the learnings and the questions that came out of the joint meeting, and as Steve just mentioned, you know, the discussion coalesced around two separate parts: process and the actual substance of the contract. And most of the discussion certainly focused on the process. You've heard it here already, but with many expressing on our Finance Committee concern about how the negotiations were handled and the lack... about how the negotiations were handled and the lack of transparency, again, something you've heard before. Specific areas of concern focused on the fact that the negotiations started in July, not June, that there was a change in counsel used by the BOA. The LCC was not included in the process, even though they requested involvement several times. The BOA did not respond to inquiries to the LCC. The Town Negotiator was not involved in the process, and that the 11th hour settlement precludes the ability to examine the last and best offers, as you heard earlier. The actual substance of the contract did not receive as much attention, in part because many felt that they lacked sufficient details and comparative data to really engage on that topic. Others, as Steve noted, said that the contract itself seemed reasonable, notwithstanding the process. Many of the committee also felt that there was no good path for the for the committee or the RTM to address the matter, is again, something you've heard already, given the arbitration process and the limited set of options going forward. So we did not take up the delay process, but rather, the Finance Committee came together, another process that I think worked very well as a group, came together with the following statement, which is a sense of the Finance Committee, which has jointly come together is this: As the Finance Committee for the RTM, we believe it is our responsibility, when approving a contract of such substantial financial commitment, that we have more information than was provided in reviewing this contract. We request that in the future, any request for the RTM approval of substantial magnitude provide more financial information, including background information ahead of such a contract approval, to the RTM, the Town Negotiator, and the Labor and Contracts Committee. Mike Mason, the town's Contract Negotiator, as well as the Labor Contracts Committee, possess deep experience which can be helpful in such contracts. Furthermore, the Labor Contracts Committee should be involved in all aspects of critical town contracts. We request that future negotiations include these valuable representatives to help inform and influence future contract negotiations. The Finance Committee took a vote on Item 14, as it appears on the call, with the tally being five in favor, five noes, and one abstaining. A tie vote is a failed vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So that is going to bring us to the first of two votes that we are going to take on this item, which is the Labor Contracts Motion to Postpone Indefinitely. And I just want to remind people, we haven't used the motion to postpone indefinitely in a while. So I just want to remind people that it effectively allows the contract to go into force without taking a vote on the actual merits of the contract. So if you were to vote in favor of postponing indefinitely, you're not weighing in on the merits, you're just saying it is going to go through. So people who may be interested in process, that might be the bite at the apple that you want. If this item, if this motion is rejected, okay, then we will take a motion on the item that is on the call, which is to reject the contract. And as you've heard, it requires a two-thirds vote by the body to reject a contract because it is the stipulated arbitration award. So if you haven't, anybody have any questions about the process now? Yes, Mary Flynn, why don't you come to the podium, please? It's better to get them out of the way than as we're going going through. It's okay. Just hop to the podium so we can all hear you.
So if we go to the second step and vote to reject the rejection, that has to be two-thirds?
Correct. So the the if you want to vote, if you want to vote on the motion to postpone indefinitely, effectively allowing the contract to go through.
That's 50/50.
It's a simple majority.
Right.
Okay? If you are going to get to the next item, which is as it appears on the call, which has it is written on the call to reject the contract, because this has come before us as a stipulated arbitration award, the threshold to reject is two-thirds. Does everyone understand that?
Yep.
... of the body to vote yes.
Correct, correct, yes, yes. So, yes, so if you, let's first get through, let's first get through the LCC motion, see what happens. That is a simple majority to to send it through either way, right? Either reject it or approve it. It's just a simple majority at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So any other questions on that? Okay. Josh Brown, Chair of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Madam Moderator, all members and guests, on behalf of Labor Contracts, I move to postpone indefinitely this item.
Okay. That being offered on behalf of a committee does not require a second, and we do have a small speaker list. Kimberly Blank is our first speaker, to be followed by Keith Damski.
Good evening. Can you hear me from this? Good evening. I'm Kim Blank from District 7, and I'm a member of the Labor Contracts Committee. I want to explain why we should vote to postpone this item indefinitely and the message that I hope we are sending by doing this. Generally, a motion to postpone indefinitely is a way of letting a contract go into effect without voting on the merits. We typically use it as a way to deal with a contract that we don't like, often because we think the terms are bad. For a while, this became a common way of dealing with all contracts, but over time, we've trended toward voting on the merits so that we save this motion for contracts that we think are really unfavorable. But for me, this isn't about whether this is a good contract or a bad contract. Tonight, I think we need to postpone indefinitely to send a very different message. Because the Board of Ed made this an arbitration decision rather than a negotiated agreement, the RTM has effectively been cut out of the process. Not only would we need a two-thirds vote to reject this, but we don't really have the option to reject this because there is no arbitration record for an appeal. From the very beginning, the Board of Ed worked to minimize or eliminate the RTM's participation. Despite many requests, LCC members were not included in the negotiating team. We received minimal updates and still haven't heard what both sides were asking for. Remember, this is the single largest contract for the town and a major driver for our budget. State law intends for us to have the final word on this contract, and the Board of Ed has denied us this right. If we vote on the merits, we are participating in the farce that we have been left with any power or any option. But we don't really have any option. Three members of the Board of Education silenced all 230 of us when they made such a late agreement and chose not to present any evidence at arbitration. I assume they thought they were acting in the best interests of students in the town, but from beginning to end, they cut the RTM out of the process. If we take a straight vote, we are winking at this absurd situation and pretending that we have a choice. We should not dignify this with our vote. We should postpone indefinitely to show that we won't participate in a Soviet-style vote where what should be our right is really a mere formality.
Keith Damski, to be followed by Adam Leader.
Thank you. Hate to disappoint you, I'm not going to be talking about any Soviet farces. So just a few points of correction. And to be clear, I don't think this is the best process. I'm not thrilled with the fact that we don't have that much authority here. But facts matter. Now, did three members of the BOE, by the way, from both parties, set us all up to fail? No. There are other people there. We have not heard a single objection, at least not at BOC or Finance or Education, from any of them. Why not? When the BOE looked at this overall, six nothing, six zero vote. So three people didn't cut us out of anything. That's a little less conspiratorial. Now, what did happen? Well, what happened is the machinations of our law. The law requires, as was noted, that once we enter into arbitration, more or less, we're done. If there's a stipulated agreement, we are done. It is actually true, but you'll find out later. We're done, because a stipulated agreement, we don't get to see. And if they're, and if we if we don't want a stipulated agreement, the arbitrators are already making the final decision. Once it's an arbitration, we're done. So why didn't they stop it in mediation? Why didn't they stop it there? It's possible that for some, for an agreement, that they had no objections on the substance from any of those involved that we've heard. It's possible that mediation genuinely did not produce a good result. That means that something must have happened earlier. If this was designed from the beginning, it is quite a wild theory. And one might say, well, why didn't they start earlier? Why didn't they start earlier than July? I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, but there were a couple of other pressing matters. But let me say that if it would have made, if it would have made a few weeks difference, then that's good. But fundamentally, I don't like that our LCC committee was not more involved. I would like them to be more involved. I'm not happy about that. Tonight, we have a choice, the results of which is more or less equivalent in practice. Yeah, there are messages, but one of them is to say, let's avoid an up or down vote. The other one is to up or down vote. If we say, let's postpone, that's a protest. We don't like the process, that's the most important thing here. If we give an up or down vote, we give more significance to the substance. And it's been poo-pooed that, well, no one seems to have a problem with the substance. We've got a lot of people agreeing on something, that's pretty good. Again, the process matters. But here, what's the message that we're sending? We don't have a great option, but I'd say that we err on the side of substance. And then we vote no to postpone. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Leader, to be followed by Sophie Coven.
I'm Adam Leader, District 11, and a member of Labor Contracts and Education. I'm here to support the motion to postpone indefinitely. I largely agree with what Kim said, and just want to highlight a larger issue that I have as a reason to postpone indefinitely. My biggest concern is the system impact of taking a vote on the merits of this agreement because of the process by which it was brought to us. The contract costs are well above Greenwich's local inflation rate, as certified by the Comptroller. Every other bargaining unit is watching what we do here. If the RTM explicitly endorses above inflation costs in a record vote without having understood the arbitration risk data, what does that tell the other eight bargaining units, whose contracts we've reviewed this term, in our busiest term ever on the RTM? It signals Greenwich will pay above inflation and is chronically afraid to pursue arbitration. That precedent could hunt us for years with compounding. Instead, let's make the job easier for Greenwich's labor negotiators in the next cycle. Let the teacher's contract take effect based on the Board of Education's vote alone. Vote yes on the motion to postpone indefinitely.
Thank you. Sophie Coven, to be followed by our final speaker, Susan Fahy.
Good evening, Sophie Coven. I attended the LLC BOC Finance and Education Committee meetings, as was referenced earlier. In those meetings, some RTM members did express frustration with the process, so I want to talk a little bit about that from my perspective. The GEA contract is the third Board of Ed contract I have negotiated in the past 18 months. I also served on the GOCA and LUNA committees last year. The process for all three of these negotiations is precisely dictated by state laws, and in all these negotiations, the Board of Education was represented by legal counsel that guided the board through the required process. In accordance with that law, each time, the BET was represented by Harry Fisher and Stephen Selps. Tom Mooney of Shipman Goodwin has historically represented the Board of Education in labor negotiations. However, Mr. Mooney has also serves as a counsel to town, and due to that conflict of interest, is no longer able to represent the Board of Education in labor negotiations. Therefore, the Board of Education retains Stephen Seedor to serve as counsel. Mr. Seedor has 26 years of experience and represents approximately 20 districts across Connecticut in varying capacities. He has also negotiated dozens of non-certified contracts with administrators, custodians, paraeducators, secretaries, library staff, police, and so on. He's a very experienced lawyer. The teacher contract is a very consequential contract, as people have mentioned tonight, both in terms of monetary significance to the town and also in terms of the educational outcomes and experience of our students. The Board of Education members serving on the negotiation committee understand this contract is absolutely critical, and we were concerned that the process be highly productive. Given the importance of this contract, we decided a smaller negotiation team, working closely together, would be the best approach. Past negotiation teams advised, both bipartisan, past negotiation teams advised that having too many people in the room with a changing cast of characters from one meeting to the next had been disruptive in previous negotiations. A larger group has also been prone to leaks of confidential information during the bargaining process. Violations of the rules of negotiation can lead to charges against the parties, and we wanted to safeguard against that possibility. The actual contract terms that were agreed to suggest that the smaller team approach was productive. Our projected cost of contract is lower than almost every neighboring town reaching settlements this fall. Some RTM members have asked the negotiations team to reduce all information used in negotiation, including materials we reviewed, last best offers, and points of concern and disagreement. This is a highly problematic and unusual request and likely would have a negative impact on future town contracts. The negotiation team agreed from the outset to keep all information used in negotiations confidential. This has been the case for every labor contract negotiated, negotiation that I'm aware of and have participated in. For transparency, we have shared and will continue to share publicly available information, and we have described our overall goals and strategies. Everything we share in RTM committee meetings or here tonight becomes public information, literally anyone, available to anyone in the world who has an internet connection. Members of the public are welcome in all those meetings, and I'm glad they attend, but I think it would be extremely foolish to share in detail exactly what we felt our strengths and weaknesses were in negotiation. That is simply undermining the Board of Ed members who will engage in the next round of labor negotiations. I absolutely believe in reviewing strategy and considering where we could have been more effective. That is exactly why we slimmed down the negotiations team. We felt a smaller team would be more productive, and I think we were. But I'm not conduct inclined to conduct a public postmortem with the GEA negotiators literally in the room right now. To use an analogy we are all familiar with, after a game, coaches are frequently asked by the press to talk about the strengths and the weaknesses of their team's performance. Coaches tend to respond carefully to such inquiries. They are already thinking about the next game, and they most certainly are not about to reveal in detail their team's greatest weaknesses. Perhaps some of those weaknesses are obvious, but others may be less so, and it would be detrimental to provide future opponents with a roadmap to beat you, to beat your own team. You don't give away your game plan to your adversary, adversary, excuse me. In response to the RTM committee requests, the board has provided additional information on local settlements as they've become public, and we will continue to share that information. In conclusion, we think this is a strong agreement for the town, for the schools, and for our teachers, and we hope that RTM appreciates the hard work required by the Board of Ed and GEA negotiation negotiation teams to achieve this outcome. Thank you.
Susan Fahy is our final speaker on this item.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Moderator and fellow RTM members. Thank you, Sophie, for your hard work. I may not be your last and best offer, but hopefully I'm your last and best speaker. Tonight, I rise to express my support for the motion to postpone this item indefinitely. As a background, I've been on the RTM for 16 years, and all those 16 years on the Education Committee, and I've been deeply involved in the schools, both North Street and Central Middle School and the High School. Sitting on the North Street and Central Middle School exec boards and nominating teachers for Teachers of the Year, we support our teachers greatly and our family. But I think it's critical to point out... But I think it's critical to point out tonight that two of the past education chairs, the current chair, myself, the previous vice chair and current secretary at the Education Committee, are all supporting this motion to postpone indefinitely. But as I rise, I rise to really talk about the process. One of the main roles, if not the main role of the RTM, and I did put into JPT and Grok, and they agree, is to approve expenditures over $5,000. So as a rule follower or a process person like I, you can imagine this irked me that they had a decision that was made by three people that can hand tie our community with no checks and no balances. As an unaffiliated registered voter, this is not about party. Entering into a contract that is a stipulated agreement where there is no ability for the elected governing body, our body, to opine to vote is simply undemocratic. Imagine if the contract was egregiously low, and great teachers from our town were leaving in droves, and we had no way to say anything. So a vote to postpone indefinitely sends the contract into effect, which still supports our teachers, as I do, and the contract that the GEA and the Board of Ed agreed on. But it also sends a strong message that this process is wrong, and we should not allow a stipulated agreement to usurp the democratic process of our RTM and those of us that are elected to uphold it. I support our teachers and our education system, so if we want to have a more systemic conversation about how teachers are given their, how teachers, given their contribution to society, are underpaid as a whole, we can do that. But when we undermine a democratic process that follows, that allows us to have checks and balances, I cannot vote for that. I ask you to support the motion to postpone this indefinitely with the hope that it'll send a message that a stipulated arbitration award that does not allow for this governing body to weigh in is not acceptable. Hopefully, in the meantime, we can push our Greenwich legislation to speak to change in the statutes that govern this overall process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now, we're gonna, we're gonna call for the vote on the Labor Contracts motion to postpone this item indefinitely. As I've explained to you and as you've heard, this would, if this motion passes, the contract goes into effect, right? It goes through. It requires a simple majority to pass. Okay? Does everyone understand that? Okay. Craig, can you open the vote? Okay. So, LCC motion to postpone indefinitely. Has everyone voted who wants to vote on this? Yes? Okay. Okay. I have the vote on the Labor Contracts motion to postpone indefinitely. Those in favor, 129. Opposed, 32. Abstaining, 5. That motion has carried. There being no further business this evening, the meeting stands adjourned. I wish you all good luck in the November election, and I'll see you in December. Thank you.